Good evening. Welcome everyone to the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. The purpose of the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee is twofold. One, to increase public awareness of the Board of Education and the ways in which Board oversight and decision making improve student performance and achievement in the district. Two, to facilitate the Board's working relationship with stakeholders to advance district interest. As far as speakers addressing the CIGR agenda, there are no speakers. We have nobody signed up. With that, I'm going to turn the gavel over to President White who will announce the motion for executive session.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Good evening, everyone. We have a number of matters that we have to discuss in executive session as my colleagues and I have previously explained. Executive session is there such so that the Board of Education could discuss things that shouldn't necessarily be discussed in the public eye. And those things could be any number of things like matters involving personnel matters, matters involving litigation. There's a whole host of things that state law allows us, in some instances requires us, to discuss in executive session. No one is trying to keep things from the public or not be transparent. These are frequently conversations that are mandated, take place in private. And so in that regard, in that spirit, I am going to ask my colleagues, one of my colleagues to bring a motion.
Motion.
To go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a particular employee. And also on occasion, we might have to solicit the advice of counsel. So that motion is made. I think I heard Commissioner Lebron and I think I heard a second from Vice President Elliott. All those in favor of that motion to go into executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to go into executive session on the second floor. For those of you who came to see these two committee meetings, including CIGR, we will endeavor to get back as soon as possible, but we can't give you a definitive time that we'll be back. But please be patient with us as we try to do other district business. Thank you.
Welcome back. We will continue with our CIGR committee meeting. And at this time, I'm going to ask that Deli and Mike Schmidt do their presentation in reference to lunches.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you for having us this evening to present on food services. Can you hear me?
Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. Once again, President White, Vice President Elliott, Superintendent. We are going to update our food service plan tonight for you at the request of the committee. Deli Akine is on Zoom tonight. He'll be doing the presentation, and then we're certainly available for any follow-up questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you for having us this evening to present on food services. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry. I think I'm the only one that can hear you because I'm hearing you through the headphones, which is ironic because I'm usually the person that can't hear.
Hello?
No, can't hear you.
Tom, my video is not even working.
I can hear you.
We can hear you now, Deli. Go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, good evening, and thank you for having us present on food services this evening. We truly appreciate it. Next slide, please. Food service overview. On an average, we serve about 38,000 meals consisting of breakfast and lunch. Those are provided at no cost for all students enrolled in the district. All meals meet or exceed guidelines determined by the federal government. Next, please. Here are the components for lunch. We have five components we must meet daily when we provide lunch to our students. They consist of fruits, meat-and-alternate, milk, grain, and vegetables. Next, please. The main components for lunch. Lunch, the district is required to offer students five components with each meal. Students are required to take a minimum of three and maximum of five components in order for us to be able to claim those meals. Students are also required to take a serving of fruit or vegetable for the district to count them. Here are some examples. There are some examples. The milk, milk has to be skimmed of 1% flavored milk. Meat-mit alternate, meat, cheese, cottage cheese, yogurt, beans. Those consist of meat or an alternate to meat. Grains, all grains must be whole grain rich. No white bread, if the rice we serve, the cereal, pretzels, everything has to be all bread. In order for us to claim them. Fruit, vegetables, these are required. When a kid, a student pick milk, meat, and grain, they must pick their food or vegetables. It's not up for us to claim that meal. Next, please. Here is an example. I'll just go through one of them. The main item in this case is spaghetti with meat sauce. We pour the pasta and meat sauce on the student's tray. Because it contains grain component and the meat component, the student then only needs to take a serving of a fresh fruit or vegetable for us to meet the requirement. They also can take a carton of milk or other item offered as part of the regular lunch. Like I said earlier, minimum of three components or maximum of five. So the spaghetti, the meat sauce is considered two. They pick a fruit or veggie, consider three, they can pick milk or another breast dish. Giving them five items altogether. Next, please. Now let's talk about breakfast. Breakfast consists of three items. We are required to offer four components, but they can pick three, minimum up to four. One to two ounces equivalent of bread or grain. One half cup of food, one cup serving of 100% juice or milk. Students are required to take a serving of the food to be counted as a reversible meal. If they pick a cereal and milk, we cannot claim those meals. They have to pick food, their food, in order for us to claim. Here's another example of breakfast. Whole grain packets, one half cup food, and a carton of milk. It's a, it's an acceptable meal for us to claim. A student can pick one pattern of cereal, one piece of toast, or a package of crackers and milk, and one half cup of food. If they pick everything without the food, that meal is not allowed. We cannot claim that meal. Next, please. Now, these are the requirements. These are the regulations, the meal patterns we must follow. Looking at this chart under breakfast meal pattern, as we can see, it consists of mainly three things, three items. The fruit, grains, and milk. That's it. Breakfast with the new regulation is grain or bread heavy. Unfortunately, we hear complaints at times, why is it always bread, bread, bread? It is what we are required to solve in order for us to be in compliance. Under breakfast, I'm sorry, under breakfast, we have a minimum of 350 to 500 calories for our students in K through fifth grade. Less than 10% of the food we provide has to be saturated fat. Less than 430 grams sodium. Again, at times, that's where we hear the complaint. None of us will accept going to a restaurant and being served 350 to 500 calories of anything. We're going to complain about it. Unfortunately, when it comes to school food services, these are the requirements we must follow. Similarly, with lunch also. Next slide, please. Now, here are some challenges we are experiencing currently. The 2021 school year is riddled with challenges for the department. Some are unique due to the pandemic for the last two years, while others are annual challenges that have been increased with the added pressures of the pandemic. The three biggest challenges for now are staffing, supply chains, and increase food costs. Currently, quarry positions are empty, including staff on long-term leave of absence versus previous years when we only shortened to 12 people. That is significant. Practically non-existent substitute pool. Three, currently, we have on hand versus when we used to have 30 to 35 of them. Almost 60% of our staff are new. Unable to hold annual summer training this year due to COVID, we're having to come up with ways to train our people in order for them to still be able to take care of our students. Limited current training due to COVID protocols. Averaging 24 staff absences daily, call-out, personal day, and so on and so forth. Significant increase of average cost in staff salaries that was necessary for us to be able to hire people. On that note, I would like to thank the board members for approving the pay increase for employees, vintage staff. It really helped us, give us the capacity to bring people in, knowing that once they become a permanent employee, their minimum wage is going to be $15. Would like to thank you all so much for allowing us to have that luxury of increase. Thank you. Next, please. Supply chain issue. The school district, the district school nutrition team works hard to ensure students have healthy, nutritious, and appealing meals. As we know, the important role they play in fueling healthy minds and bodies. There are times when the district may not receive expected food orders due to labor shortages, delivery drivers, and limited product availability. Discontinued products or limited amounts of specific types of product. As a result, individual schools may need to make last-minute changes to menus or substitute different brands of food products. While we are working to provide favorite menu items, whenever possible, we are also thinking ahead to identify alternative food items that are both nutritious and appealing to our students. Are there supply, these are some of the questions we get in, and also we ask to ourselves. Are there supply or sourcing issues? Yes. The entire lines of product are becoming unavailable due to production or transportation issue. For example, we order directly from Tyson Foods for items like chicken nuggets, breaded chicken, hamburger meats. By ordering a tractor trailer food, we are normally able to mitigate costs through large purchases. Unfortunately, we have been informed twice already this year since July that entire orders will not ship. The day that we are expected to receive them approximately for the palace war, that is when we going to learn that we are not getting our food. We have to go to plan B. We have had both calories and general meals, cereals unavailable for waste at a time. The increased demand nationally for child nutrition products that are individually wrapped, COVID-friendly, have left manufacturers unable to keep up with the demand. We are not the only school district providing our students packaged meals. The whole country is doing the same thing because for now, it is a practical, safe way to provide meals for our students. Next, please. Milk, a required item for our milk service. Increased cost of 38% over the price pre-cold. 38% more we paying for milk. $460,000 increase in cost of trays because in New York State now, we are not allowed to use tarot forms. We have to get other means of trays to serve our food. On average, we're seeing a 30% plus cost increase in all cost of goods, all over. It's because. Now, where do we get our food from? We purchase all of our grocery items from nationally recognized K-12 vendors. Some of these vendors are household names such as Tyson, Genio, Richard's. Others are more known in the K-12 community. Yes, Food, Wild Max, Classic Delight, Integrated Food Services, Shaw. So you can see, we have plethora of vendors we get our food from. Every year, we get commodity, $3 from the government, which we use to pay, or we give them to Tyson to help us process our chicken. Get raw chicken, turn it into chicken nuggets or chicken fingers. We pay them for that. All entry must have seen and lived. All the food we provide to our students, they must be nutritionally fit because when we are revealed, we have to show the government all documents pertaining to every food that we serve. Often utilize states approved vendors. We belong to moral county bosses deal for food items to full purchasing power. So we get food nationally, we get food locally. We, the 17 or 18 school districts in the county, we all get together through bosses to get some of our food by using local vendors like this company in a, in a area. Palms, we get food from Palms, we get American products, we get local products also from some of our vendors. What does food service look like while we still navigate through COVID? Well, in one word, it's complex. Multiple service styles happening at the same time during each meal period in school with limited staffing. For example, lunch being served on two floors, in the cafeteria and the gym at the same time due to space limitations within the cafeteria. Some buildings at breakfast are having grab-and-go classroom delivery and cafeteria service at the same time. We have to be creative in ways we provide services to our students. Why so much prepackaged food? Grab hot food has enabled service in the classroom with minimal incidents. It allows food to remain covered on trays as students carry their lunch back to the classroom in certain buildings. It helps us to avoid food safety issues as well as staff shortage. We have had to make our menus as simple and error-proof as possible. Products need to hold its integrity in the cafeteria as well as through transportation or delivery to the classroom. All have to be individually wrapped. This year especially, using almost 100% packaged food. Again, as we know, this is due to the effect of COVID and the impact, having an impact on the department. Why can't parents bring pizza food to classrooms for their students? Actually, they can. However, there are restrictions on when and what is allowed. In an effort to maintain the program, the integrity of the program, USDA and state child nutrition have deemed any foods outside of the regulated program like breakfast and lunch is considered competitive foods. As such, they cannot be served until after the last lunch period. So if a parent wants to bring their pizza for a classroom, they can do so, but guess what? They have to wait until the kids are through eating the food they provide. Additionally, they have to meet the same standard of nutrition as it is required by the federal program. In the case of pizza, it should be, it should have to be a 51% whole grain crust. They cannot bring a white dough pizza to serve to our students. It has to meet the requirement. The total fat has to be less than 30% of the entire calories and as well as 10%, less than 10% saturated fat with no trans fat. Lastly, New York State does not allow homemade baked goods to be served in schools such as cupcakes and so on and so forth due to food safety concerns. All items would have to be pre-purchased, packaged. They still have to meet the same nutritional requirements as above. Again, that is why we shy away from people bringing food from home. All of our food are from an approved vendor. If anything should go wrong, we know who to go to. We know how to go back and trace the cost from the beginning to the end so we know who to hold responsibility for having any bad. In summary, I would like to seize this opportunity to thank my leadership team, David, Ray, Jeff, all the field supervisors, and the entire food services team. They are incredible. They are dedicated, relentless, and hard work from day one since the pandemic started. I am bloody proud of each and every one of them, including those who have retired and came back to support us. A wise man once said, wars come and go, but my soldiers stay eternal. They have been there from day one. I cannot thank them enough. I want to seize this opportunity to do so. We would like to extend each of you an opportunity to come and visit with us. We're offering an open invitation. Let us know when you are available to come and visit us in the central kitchen. We'll be more than happy to show you around, to discuss further. Any additional questions you have, you may have, we would be more than happy to address them. And lastly, I would like to thank all of you permissionally for allowing us to share our accomplishments, opportunities, and challenges with you this evening. We truly appreciate your support. We would like to also extend our sincere thanks to our boss, Mr. Mark Schmidt, chief of operations, for his words of encouragement. of operations, for his words of encouragement every day and the support he offered through this period. We truly appreciate each and every one of you. And additionally, the school principals, the teachers, every single one of our schools. We couldn't have done what we're doing now without their support, being flexible, and working with us through it all. We thank them also. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Deli. I had a couple of questions, and I'll ask mine, then I'll probably check with the board. Mike, did you want to? Did you need to go?
I just was going to say, Deli would have loved to join us tonight, but he had a situation at home that took precedence, so the magical of Zoom. So I want to make sure I said that as well.
First of all, when you had listed under the challenges, the increased cost of goods, my question is, does the reimbursable increase with inflation? I mean, do, no?
Right now, the reimbursement does not align with our contractual rate, our labor rate, nor any outside effects that would raise costs of goods or product. The reimbursement, at this point, the reimbursement rate has been stable, so it is not adjusted with these, with the COVID-related expenditures. It certainly might, but we have no indication that that's going to happen.
So we actually could be going in the hole?
We're working very hard to avoid that, but the, it's, you know, the math on this is really, speaks volumes. Much, 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 last year we were talking about number of meals and with the lower enrollment with our return from COVID. This year, fully enrolled and fully operational, and now the impact is outside of our own little food service operation that's really drilling this down. But hopefully, you know, there's some movement here that we all read, that things change. But we're certainly going to have to monitor things very closely. And I want to thank Jeff Picciano and Carlene and her team. They've been very helpful in terms of working with us on the, to be more proactive and try to develop some strategies. In fact, Carlene mentioned earlier about strategizing more with the great city schools because we're all facing the same issue, so that's some outreach that we're going to take part in here in the next week or so.
Okay. One other question I had is that, because we speak about the five components and what meets requirements. My concern is, are we working on what's appealing enough? Are we monitoring what the students are actually, the meals they are actually engaging in, eating? Because I'm thinking they're not totally, from what I know from my school visits, there's a few students that don't even eat, engage in our lunches. Are we monitoring the meals that are more popular and is there some reason why we can't serve those meals more often? I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, actually, no, there's not. I think the, if, we can't just go by popularity. Certainly pizza would be out in front of any meal choice from our students based upon the evidence that you spoke about. So we, you know, we're currently looking at, we evaluate the menu on a monthly basis. It changes based upon what new product we can obtain. The ones we put online that we discussed earlier in the semester have been successful, but you're right, it is a fickle business, right? So it's very, it's not always easy to actually target what the students are exactly looking for. So Deli and his team do outreach. We listen to principals and certainly our cook managers in the buildings give us feedback as well. So it's trying to target that and be able to order it in enough lead time in order to get it and then match it up with whatever the supply chain are. You know, chicken nuggets are also popular, but you saw they were difficult, they're difficult to get as well. So it's a bit of an alignment, a bit of an alignment issue in regards to that.
Oh, so I'm going to start down here at.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner, yep.
Just had a couple of questions. First of all, I want to commend you on the great work with 40 vacancies and 60% of your staff in new positions. And I know that's a tremendous curve, but my question really, really related to the individuals that are on long-term leave of absences. How do, how do we backfill those positions? Do we look for temporary staff or do we bring on staff in like more permanent positions so that we can ensure that those positions are filled?
Good evening. Yes, we are continually recruiting and trying to find staff. We recently attempted and advocated for additional staff to help with recruitment and for incentives among other tasks, but we are struggling. We are struggling in terms of those efforts.
And the primary evidence is our lack of substitutes, right? That would be very logical, with a long-term leave, you'd have a substitute to step in, and right now we don't have those in those places, which is quite true basically in every operational area.
Are you good, Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Lebron?
Hi, yes. I just want to uplift that, like, there are shortages both in staff and issues around food services across the country. And I just want to note that because the New York Times did publish an article and named several school districts where in some districts, they don't even know what the cost of the food is going to be until the food is delivered because of the inflation. And so schools are being forced to then negotiate at that moment whether they're going to accept that food delivery or not, even if it's at an inflated price. So as you all know, I do like to follow the trends that are happening right now, especially with COVID and other school districts, and then marrying that with these deficits in terms of not just the financial deficits that school districts are facing with their school food budget, but also with the shortages in staff. And so knowing that, that we're already starting to experience these things, have we done some analysis to determine what the next three months will look like because of this impact on COVID and the economy and the inflation? The other piece I saw was also like the inflation, where we're going to be impacted is on the services, that being able for companies to even meet the demand even with customer service. So have we done an analysis both like at three months, what we look like in three months now, what we'll look like in six months? Because if this is on a curve of moving up, the trajectory is going up of less staff, higher cost for food, less access to food, and issues with delivery and providing services, are we then prepared when we hit this peak, if you will, of all of these issues? Because otherwise, I'm afraid we're going to end up where we were with the transportation crisis just a month ago.
So I think I could probably take that in two parts. So I'll start with the financial side first. Carlene and her team have a budget analyst that actually sits in the food service offices. And so the trend lines, the financial trend lines are monitored through that path directly to back to her team, excuse me. It is fluid. So what I just described to you in terms of the supply chains wasn't on our radar nearly as much as in September as it is now. There's stories across the country. We were in a little different situation here. So we definitely have, we have to go back and do that. And we basically, I would say not a formal report per se, but that's monitored and we have to continue to adjust to make sure that we, we're, so right now what we're projecting is at our current state, and we're projecting that for the next 90 days because we don't see any letup in some of the items that we discussed throughout the winter months. I think the lack of drivers, truck drivers across the country, that's only going to be exacerbated when the weather kicks in and all the other items. So we're working under a mindset that we're going to have less, and we need to come up with some contingency plans to be able to do our basic responsibility, which is supply meals. So that's what our team is working through internally. We just met with Deputy Superintendent Martina Zavits and the superintendent to provide them our contingency plans and some of those thinking, you know, like as Commissioner, it's only as good as your next set of meals, right? So we have, we believe we have a pretty good plan in place, but we continue to evaluate it on a weekly basis, and I think I'll leave it at that without being redundant.
And I just want to uplift then, I really don't want us to experience some of the challenges that we experienced during the pandemic. So I'm glad to hear that there are some contingency plans. I would also want to ensure that we are also reaching out to our community partners around potentially being a backup for us so that, I just want to minimize the impact and lack of food choices and things like that because if we're also serving food that kids don't want to eat, there's not a lot of high value for our students in that because they won't eat it. And I will tell you, my kid gives me an everyday account of what's served for breakfast and lunch at her school, whether it's good or not, and whether she ate it or not, because there are times where she won't touch what's being served. And there are other times she's like, Mom, this is really good, you know, note this and look for it on the menu so I know not to pack anything that day. So I will.
Sophia can be one of our test cases.
Sophia can't be one of your testers.
Maybe I can start the menu with that.
Yep, she rates my food too, so she already has a rating system. But let me just say this, I would also, and I don't know where Carlene, our CFO, is at. I did see her earlier. We'll have a conversation with you for perhaps putting this on the radar for finance so that we're trending and looking specifically at this fluctuation in food services and what impact that's going to have on our budget moving forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lee, Vice President Lee.
Thank you. So how much food do we have at this point? How long would it last us with the food that we currently have?
Well, we don't have the storage capability to be weeks and weeks on end. It's not, we store a pretty large, pretty large amount of frozen goods in some of our walk-in freezers and walk-in coolers and so forth. It's meant to more focus on the next month's menu, so we buy it, you know, about a month ahead of time in many areas. So if I said 30 days to feed all the students, I don't think I would be totally on target there. We would definitely need some outside set of, you know, fruits and vegetables and so on to come to us in that, in some capacity. So we're not set up to have a huge storehouse of food, but I think as Commissioner Lebron mentioned, there are community partners that do have that capacity. And if we get, if we get into the situation, which we certainly could be in in a matter of weeks, right? We don't know, then there's certainly other entities out there with much more capacity and their freezers and so forth, then we may have to look to that as one of our options. And like I said, it's just, we, you know, it's just we're monitoring on a daily basis and making those adjustments. And I think that's, Commissioner, Carlene and her team have been, have been great about thinking proactively with us as well.
So there's been no.
Ultimately, we have to, we're going to have to pay the bill in one capacity or another. I think that's what we have to plan for.
So there's no shortage at this point? All of our students are getting, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. President White?
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. I am sure my colleagues would join me in this. We would ask that you share our great degree of thanks and gratitude for the members of your staff that on a daily basis, on a regular, provide the meals that some students are not able to get at home for financial and economic reasons. And the staff, particularly I think of the members of Bente, do this, have done this in the context of a pandemic, which it's no small measure of courage to step into an environment where others are in close quarters because you're concerned about children. So again, I am very confident, I'm joined by my colleagues, in saying a clear and definitive thank you for that service. And I hope maybe some of them are watching, and if they are not, please, between you and Deli, please share that sincere thanks and appreciation for making that sacrifice and stepping up for our children when others perhaps have chosen not to or have decided not to. So we appreciate, you know, we often use this in the context of police and fire, and it is somewhat of an abused phrase, but we do appreciate their service because it's to the most vulnerable of our citizens, our children. So thank you.
The word courageous quite often in our society is probably overused. What they did, monitoring those, the food distribution sites, where we fed everybody, anybody that came up for a meal, we fed everybody that came up, and, you know, they really put themselves at harm's risk during those times. So I have great respect, and I certainly relate those kind words.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
Commissioner Malora?
Hi there. Thank you so much for your presentation. Deli, thank you so much for all that you do and to all of our food service workers. It's, the hero is an apt term, I think, to describe every employee in this district. Three questions. So in terms of hiring cook managers, where are we at right now?
What I can do, instead of getting, I don't want to get too much into the actual different personnel lines. We can provide, if you place that in the question log, we can provide a summary by job title of where we are in terms of our vacancies.
Okay.
And that, I think that would be a much more succinct response to that because we would give you all the different variety of positions that we have and where we're short.
All right. And are we continuing to offer hot meals to our students or do we need to shift to a grab and go option because of the shortages?
Right. So we are, we are, that is, the grab and go or the cold option sort of is our last resort in all of our contingency plans. We, you know, we may have to make adjustments on a one-day or two-day a week basis, whatever it might be, depending on what the situation that we've already described earlier, but the idea of eliminating hot meals completely from our options is right now not on the table for us.
Okay.
We want to maintain that as to the best of our ability.
Okay. And then can you comment on any type of incentives that we're currently offering to get some of these Bente employees back?
I would not be able to comment directly on that. I would share one thought. It's in my other areas where we are short staff, we have the ability to access overtime for those particular people. Because the food service window in terms of being able to serve meals is only in a short amount of time, overtime option is exactly the same thing as having a bus driver stay and do an extra run or a custodian work an extra shift. So that's one area where we'd not been able to access that really puts us at a disadvantage, but I could not comment on any incentives at this moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. I could keep us here all night with my observations, but I won't. I just want to say thank you for rising to the occasion, to the crisis, both Deli and your staff, Mike, for your management of the situation. The rules such as they are make the task pretty darn hard under the best of circumstances. You know, the sodium requirements, the whole grain. It's awfully hard to make meals that kids want to eat and then to have to, you know, provide cold meals or warm meals individually wrapped. All of these things just add layers of complexity as, and Deli used really the right word there. It's complex, I'm sure. And, you know, I do wish that there was more discretion in the system all the way around. When I went to school, school lunches were the best things in sliced bread. I mean, I went to an exceptional school with an exceptional kitchen, but, and I was on free and reduced lunch, so, but the world is more complicated now than it used to be. It used to be, you could open a 10-pound can of plums and serve two, three plums in a bowl and meet the requirements. Now it's so much harder to deliver fresh fruit to kids and expect them to eat it. So all I can say in short is just keep on keeping on, and thank you so much for your
Once again, thank you, Mike and Deli, for your work here tonight. At this time, we're going to move on to discussion item number two, which is an update on the safety on school campuses. It's going to be delivered by our superintendent, Dr. Myers.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Good evening, everyone. And as Commissioner Adams shared, I am giving a safety and security update. Last week, I reported that COVID-19 has significantly impacted our school district, and Rochester is seeing an increase in acts of violence occurring outside of schools, and some are making their way onto our campus, campuses. I shared three very specific areas of impact that included social, emotional, safety and security, and staffing shortages. And I updated you around rock restorative teams, trauma, illness, and grief, and remote support teams, as well as health zones and Center for Youth. Under safety and security, we talked about an assessment and revision of individual school security plans, a review of the district's safety equipment, and the fact that the district's safety and security mobile units are on special detail. And then staffing shortages, we had a discussion about the concerted effort being underway relative to recruitment and retention, and that schools are experiencing an increase in unanticipated staff absences. I also shared that we're launching a community action initiative with students, parents, and. and the community to address issues and to walk away with solutions. This initiative, to reiterate, is happening on Saturday, November 6th, at the Franklin Campus from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And we are collaborating with dads and moms and parents, students, and our entire community. And we will walk away with the meeting with action items to carry into subsequent meetings later in November. Additionally, our FIRE program that we're initiating, which is Fathers Initiating Restorative Engagement Session, will be a part of the programming on Saturday, November 6th, and it will include breakout rooms. Parents will have similar, similar discussions with action items as well as students. We also intend to have discussions about social, emotional, mental health and well-being, and supporting our students and our staff will be, will be a specific focus. When we talk about safety and security at the Franklin Campus, we know that that has been items of discussion and there has been concerns about Franklin. The immediate support plan for Franklin Upper School this week included staffing supports, school safety officers, the mobile safety unit. My leadership team and I were at Franklin yesterday, and I had the opportunity to speak with students, administrators, staff, and even some neighborhood businesses. Principal Smith met with his staff on Monday to gather feedback and to share next steps. And today, during Superintendent Conference Day, they had a discussion about the creation of a culture and climate team, including multiple stakeholders. School-specific needs were addressed, including additional work sessions that will take place during the week. Operational practices were reviewed, such as protocols for reporting assaults and how to get access and utilize community resources in the school building. Teams also met today to gather feedback for the climate and culture team. Coming this Friday, during the half-day PD session, professional development session, the team will begin action planning on how to improve the culture and climate at Franklin. It is important to remember that during the pandemic, this campus with new leadership has not had an opportunity to develop the school's cultural norms as COVID closed our schools six months after the campus united into the lower and upper schools called Franklin. District-wide strategies that have already been put in place include the following: implementation of new arrival and dismissal protocols, including additional security; allocation of resources for additional security equipment and system upgrades; deployment of central office staff to support staffing shortages, as well as assist during arrival and dismissal; and increased presence of social, emotional support staff at those schools in need. The Office of Human Capital has implemented several levers and strategies to recruit and retain staff as a result of COVID-19, including the need to fill current vacancies in our district. Yesterday, we were proud to announce a new incentive program for current and future school bus drivers to help minimize impacts of the staffing shortage. Since September, when the district announced that its bus providers did not have enough drivers to, to transport all students to and from school, several adjustments were made to ensure safe travel for more than 29,000 students who received transportation from the Rochester City School District. We've been working collectively with Bente, the bargaining unit that represents several employees, including school bus drivers, to keep current employees it has and to attract more to our workforce in the Rochester City School District. The following incentives are being offered. New employee recruitment incentive. Any school bus driver hired between now and April 1st, 2022 will receive a hiring incentive bonus payment of up to $2,500. Retention incentive for current employees. Any current employee prior to October 25th, 2021, whose position requires a commercial driver's license or CDL, is eligible to receive a $2,500 retention bonus. Employees must remain with the district for one year in order to receive the bonus. There's also an attendance incentive. Any current school bus driver who is absent two days or less per semester, so September through January, and February through June, is eligible for a $250 attendance bonus after the semester ends. And then there's a recruiting referral. Current employees who refer an individual to the district as either a school bus driver, clerical, food service, school safety officer, paraprofessional, or teaching assistant will receive a referral bonus of $100. I'd like to now address concerns with student conduct, particularly at the secondary level, grade seven through 12. What are the specific concerns? Students engaging in conflicts leading to physical altercations? Students engaging in atypical behaviors? And family slash community issues being addressed on campus? I'd like to share how the Rochester City School District currently is responding to this concern. We're continuing to utilize the guidelines outlined in the Code of Conduct. Students who violate the Code of Conduct are subject to consequences and disciplinary actions as outlined by district policy. When possible, the district is deploying additional staff members to alternative locations to support an increase of supervision during key times of the school day. School leaders are being supported to work with school-based leadership teams to identify strategies for increased supervision within buildings. Student-level referrals are being collected by the school chiefs to analyze the data story and to help target supports. And I'll be speaking about data in just a few moments. The Student Support Services Department created a reference guide that details the available remote support teams available in the district. Students who are involved in physical altercations or make intentional contact with staff are recommended for short-term or long-term suspensions, suspensions as warranted by the Code of Conduct, and schools are re-engaging students and families in conferences from a restorative perspective upon the return to the school community. Let's delve into the data. If we look at the data over the past three years, and we're going to take out the 2020, 2021, no data was provided as students were in remote learning, so it's, it's difficult to have comparison data. But if you look at the 2018, 19 school year, you'll see that there's a total of 1,062 suspensions. Again, the month of September is the lighter teal color and October is the darker teal color. In 1920, there were 1,600, a little over 1,600 suspensions. And during this school year, there are 1,210 suspensions. So the 21, 22 school year falls in between 1819 and 1920. And again, this data is as of October 31st of this year. Let's take a look at suspensions by grade level. You can see that ninth grade has the highest number of suspensions. I just want to point out that ninth graders, our current ninth graders, last had a full or entire school year in sixth grade. So we can hypothesize a little bit that we are seeing some middle school behaviors of our ninth graders because they were not physically, many of them were not physically present in school. You'll notice then the next highest grade is eighth grade, seventh grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and then 12th grade. So that's suspensions by grade level. Let's also look at the highest frequency of offenses. You can see that fighting of that 1,210 for the months of September and October, 28% of the offenses are fighting, or 339. Physical aggression is 18.8% or 227. Defiance and noncompliance is 192 students or 16%, and then disruptive behavior, 150 students or 12.4%. So that's just some of the numbers. Let's talk also about professional development and staff wellness. There is a concern that, that there is an increased need for our current staff to receive training in the areas of restorative practices, social, emotional, and positive-based interventions and supports, or PBIS. School security officers and other staff need ongoing training to effectively de-escalate situations by students. So how is the district currently responding to these concerns? The Office of Professional Learning, or OPL, in concert with the Office of Student Support Services, provided over 60 different sessions during the summer to prepare staff members to address matters of student conduct, social, emotional supports, relationship building, and family parent engagement. We certainly can repeat those professional development offerings. Each school was encouraged to build, building-based restorative teams and to, and these teams would engage in job embedded professional development experiences. There will be a train, turnkey training model to train approximately 1,200 district staff in the Crisis Prevention Institute's Nonviolent Crisis Intervention, or NCI. NCI will help staff address disruptive and violent behavior in Rochester schools in a safe, respectful, and effective manner, with emphasis on conflict resolution and prevention. Staff will learn how to match the level of response to the risk of the disruptive behavior and implement the least restrictive response. Student Support Services provides constant access to resources that support social, emotional practices. There's a robust social, emotional toolkit that provides staff with resources. Quarterly newsletters are sent that include links to professional development opportunities, and there are weekly communications that highlight best practices around social, emotional learning. Staff wellness, how is the district currently responding to this concern? Staff certainly have access to our Employee Assistance Program. It's a no-cost, 24/7 confidential helpline. This Thursday, we are hosting a meeting with Next Gen EAP, and an email was sent to staff today. Telehealth services through Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield gives staff the option of having a virtual doctor visit by telephone, email, or video chat for various conditions, including behavioral health counseling. The Rock Restorative Team also has held several virtual staff support circles to address staff needs. My team and I have been actively working to address the issues raised in the four unions' previous communication. I would like to reiterate that the Rochester City School District is unequivocally committed to promoting practices that create safe and high-quality learning environments. We acknowledge that our school communities are navigating a variety of issues around staffing, student conduct, and the impact of the pandemic. We also know that we have an increasing amount of students who are not adhering to our outlined expectations, which are contributing to an already challenging time on our campuses. In response to the union's request for me to issue an immediate blanket directive that violates educational laws, student privacy rights, and our district's policies, is not an option that I shared that I would exercise. Currently, any student that engages in violent behavior is placed on long or short-term suspension as guided by the district's Code of Conduct. Impacted secondary students that are placed on long-term suspension are assigned to alternative instruction for the duration of the assigned penalty after the hearing. This program is currently designed as an in-person delivery model. And based on what we know from the impact of COVID, in-person learning provides the best learning experience for our students. So we are exploring all options that prioritize in-person instruction, and will only consider remote learning options after exhausting all other solutions. At this time, I am going to ask Acting General Counsel Steve Carling to provide you with details on the legalities involved in this request, as well as the meeting my team had with union leaders regarding the Code of Conduct. I have great concerns about the request to remove and isolate students with disciplinary problems and the perception of increased violence in schools. So for just a moment, I will turn it over to Acting General Counsel Steve Carling.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I have been involved in this for a couple of weeks now. When the union request first came in, I advised Les and the team on legalities of just moving students automatically to remote instruction. My particular concern comes under Education Law Section about involuntary transfer of students for disciplinary reasons. We've looked at this, several people in the legal department have looked at this and written some advice that I shared both with the superintendent. I think that was also shared with the union presidents in response to a request for what specific problems there, you know, we were seeing. Secondarily, but, but also very much a problem potentially is that a large number of students that would be facing the suspension issue or the change of program issue would be those who are students with disabilities. So then you have the, the federal laws around change of program without a change in an IEP, without placement. So, you know, it really comes down to due process on two different levels. If a student's involved in an incident that falls within the Code of Conduct for misconduct, then they need to be, they need to be given the due process, the notice, the hearing, and then ultimately even potentially a manifestation determination. We, it's not optional to skip those steps. And it doesn't matter if you're moving a kid from an in-person to remote instruction any more so than changing school to school. There is a due process issue and several laws around doing that. The notion of privacy is really kind of a secondary component of that, in that sometimes people are very concerned that a student returns to school and they had been put out on, you know, suspension because of an incident. But the district can't talk about why students are put back. There's, there's FER protections in place for a reason. Students have the right to privacy, and, you know, the district can't waive that. So if a student's put back because of a manifestation determination, which means that a committee on special education reviewed the behavior, determined it to be within the, the student's individual education plan or, you know, is a product of their disability, those aren't things that the district talks about openly, nor can they. It's, it's not lawful. So, you know, that, that is the, the legal basis upon which the superintendent made her assertion that to automatically move students to remote instruction would be, would be illegal. As far as the Code of Conduct request, Melody Martinez-Davis and I met with the unions last week, the four union presidents, and asked specifically what in the code is, is of concern, what, what, what needs to be adapted to the new norms. There were no specific provisions of the code that were actually addressed. It was really more a matter of, the code was built on having better restorative practices. There's not enough counselors, not enough social workers, not enough support. The students aren't used to being in person, and there was nothing really specific about the code. And I did take the opportunity to, to note several provisions of the code that would allow for discipline for any student who commits a violent act against another student or a staff member, or even threatens to do so. There are options for long-term suspensions for any number of things within the existing code. So I don't, from, from that meeting and from my kind of follow-up, I don't believe that the code itself is, is the issue. I think that it may be getting confused with, you know, just kind of a general, you know, upset about the, the state of some of the behaviors, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Additionally, the union raised several other concerns, two of which I'll. address, the school resource officers in secondary schools ASAP. This request has already been discussed, and a board decision has, has been made relative to this matter. As far as the reduction of class sizes, part of our issue in the Rochester City School District is that we do have a chronic absenteeism issue in our district. And while we continue, if you can go to the next slide, while we continue to work on re-engaging our scholars, presently, class sizes are not filled to capacity. Additionally, I have discussed on previous occasions, our declining enrollment numbers do not support having our class sizes reduced. And I just want to note that the numbers shown for K through six, seven through eighth, and nine through twelve do not include self-contained classes. So in conclusion, it is extremely important that we dispel the narrative about our student body in the Rochester City School District. Fights and disruptions, if you'll go to the last slide, please. Flats, fights and disruptions are happening in our schools. And while they are not acceptable, how we speak about our students is very important. It's very impactful, and we know that words matter. We do have currently mechanisms in place, the Code of Conduct, referrals, and reporting to help mitigate these situations. It is critically important for us to find solutions for our scholars who are facing problems without excluding them from our schools and from our classrooms. We cannot allow for our students to be characterized in ways that make them seem violent and reckless. I recognize the need to hire more staff, and we are diligently working on that. But as I have already indicated, we are in a national staffing shortage. We all need to engage with students and staff in service of wellness to our team and show collective unity. The perception of division and misalignment does not help anyone. The notion that I, as the superintendent, the Board of Education, our leadership team and others, that we are not prioritizing safety is inaccurate. We do have fights and disruptive behavior, and I completely recognize that. But it is not as widespread as it's being portrayed, particularly in the media. Our data says differently. I ask any staff member, finally, who is fearful, to please speak up. Speak to your school leaders or someone you feel comfortable who can meet with the school leader so that we may address the issue immediately with you and provide the support you need to make sure that you are indeed working in a place that you feel safe and supported. With that, Commissioner Adams, that ends my safe and safety update.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to go down the line coming from this other way this time.
I'm starting with Commissioner Powell.
No questions, thank you.
Hi, thank you for that. Just a couple concerns. I think that some of the stuff that I'm going to say, I think we'll need to go on the question log, just in terms of answers, but worried about the student population at Franklin specifically, how it relates to our placement policies in the district, and where most of those students are maybe coming from. I'd love to know if the, most of the students are coming from the surrounding neighborhoods to Franklin, or if they've been placed there because of our lottery system, the managed toy system. Where are those students coming from, and what connections do they have with the surrounding neighborhoods? I just want to get a better sense of how our students are placed and, at our various high schools. So if that's something we could maybe look into, I'd appreciate that information. Thank you.
Okay.
You're good. You're all good. Okay, I, I'm going to pass on any questions that I have. I'm going to pass it down to President White.
I too will pass. Thank you for the presentation. That was very informative.
Yes, Madam Superintendent, I thought it was a, a very good presentation. I would just agree with you and like to express that, you know, we need to be working on this issue together. So, you know, with the unions putting a particular narrative out in the media, it doesn't help us to, to resolve the issues that we're having within our district. I, I really believe if that energy was placed within trying to support this work that's being done, we know, there are not only fights in the Rochester City School District, there are fights within the city, there are fights within the nation all around. There's, these are just difficult times. And I would wish that all of the unions, and that's not to say in any regard that we're not caring about what's, what happens with our employees, we certainly do. But we've got to work on being together on this, collaborating on this. The energy that is spent by the unions and the way in which the press is reporting this exacerbates the work that we're trying to do. So I'm supporting the superintendent, and I'm hoping that our unions would also support our superintendent as well. Not, for whatever reason, not trying to put it in the press so that they can get a story and that they can, can, can attempt to control what goes on in this district. They are one partner in the decision-making that goes on in this district. They do not control this district. It is the board, it is the superintendent, and it is all of our employees together. But we, we are, I'm tired of one group, particularly those unions, and particularly the RTA, to try to control a narrative that is just not there. And it's not right for the union, the RTA in particular, to try to drive that kind of wedge between the work that this board and this superintendent is doing. We've got to stop that. The RTA and all the other unions must stop that and must work with us and not against us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Elliott. Commissioner Lebron.
I don't want, I don't want to go, but I do have questions, so I want to go after Vice President Elliott. So, you know, obviously, I think I feel like I've been very vocal around the SRO issues, and I would never support. I also want to just put this on record, I do not support police officers outside of schools either. When we talk about the, the concern for an incident occurring or safety, my concern is that a, a student would be shot by a police officer. We've seen that happen in this community. We saw a man that was naked on drugs, allegedly on drugs, but certainly naked in the winter that died in the hands of police. So the inhumanity in that situation, I just don't understand how that would translate to humanity for our kids, our babies. So again, I would never, ever, ever support police in or outside of the schools, but certainly that does not mean that I don't want to advocate and support for solutions and some actions. I, Superintendent, I hear everything that you've shared. I appreciate that there's information, especially around the suspensions and what that looks like, because the narrative that kids could just get away with anything is a false narrative, and I don't want to support that. I also want to highlight that black and brown children are not criminals, and they are not contributing to criminal, with lots of hormones and emotions and trauma for some of them, and some of these fights that we are seeing come from those things, right? And the deep root of these things is really depression and hopelessness that our students sometimes feel, coming from the communities that they're living in, and not being able to express that. And a lot of people forget that depression can go either way, it can become homicidal or suicidal, and oftentimes when it's homicidal, it, it leads on a path of violence. But all of that is linked back to that depression, to that trauma of constantly being in that state. And so our children are asking and really crying out for help. So when we try to criminalize them because they're traumatized and they're seeking depression and it comes out violent, we're certainly not helping the situation and certainly not helping them. But I do want to uplift a couple of things in this, especially with the, the concerns that the unions requested. I am going to request that we actually cite the law around the removal and isolation of students. And I say that respectfully because one of the things that the union president for RTA specifically said was that he had reached out to NICID's lawyer, and they said, well, cite the law. They kind of put it back on us. And I was kind of going back and forth, and then I was like, well, yeah, that's true. We're gonna, I don't want to have this back and forth. If, if there are laws, and I'm sure that they are education laws because our students have rights, especially our special needs students, around their education and what that looks like. And Steve, I know you mentioned the IEPs, but if we could cite the actual, all the laws that would be impacted, either on record or back in writing, I would, that, that would be a request for me. The other piece I want to uplift around the class sizes and the reduction, and I know that we're working to right-size the district, if you will, but I also want to uplift that we're still in a pandemic, and knowing that our students are coming from trauma and have endured some, we, I can't even begin to explain all the things that our students may have endured in these sixteen months at home. Because I said this multiple times, like, the privileges that we all share are not the same privileges for our students at, at this time, and we don't know what it was like for sixteen months to be home. For some of us, you know, it was a joy to be with our families, some of us it was stressful, but certainly for some of our students, it was very traumatic. So I, I would push back a little bit on the class size averages. New York City, actually, this year just made a, a move to reduce their classroom sizes to fourteen students in the classroom, and predominantly because of the pandemic and COVID, and, and leveraging their CRESTA and ARP dollars to do that. I think at this point, if there was ever a time to advocate for a short-term classroom size reduction, it would be now. It would be knowing that our students are suffering from this trauma and coming in and readjusting to being in school full-time with adults, some of them who don't have relationships yet with our educators. This would be the time to do that. And if we were to take that type of step, I think that's the level of action. Put the union letter, let's put that on a shelf right now. I'm talking about our frontline staff who are in these classrooms, and I get it, that there's an absenteeism rate that we can't even really predict from day to day which classrooms are going to be bigger or smaller. But that doesn't mean that I, if I was in their shoes, I would not be worried about, hey, I have twenty-one students on my roster, fifteen came in, where are the other students? I'm still going to be concerned and trying to reach out to these parents myself, and certainly that is a, a lot of extra work. So I would just respectfully ask that we do look at making a very big, bold statement and figuring how we can reduce classroom sizes, in addition to figuring out ways, both short-term and long-term, how to provide those supports in schools. With that, I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Clark?
Sure. Just a few brief words. First of all, Superintendent, I want to thank you for this very comprehensive report and the actions that you have taken to ensure that not only our students, but our staff are safe, and safe not only at Franklin, but throughout the district. But I also wanted to commend you on the professional development strategy that you have laid out, because I think ongoing, ongoing training on a effective de-escalation is key, is key to our team, is key to our SSOs and our entire team, because being in the community, one of, one of the concerns I continually get, a matter of fact, I, I had a meeting with someone who came up to me this morning, and they, and they wanted to talk to me about police on the perimeter. And this individual, who's a staff member and also have student, have children in the school, indicated that initially, her answer was yes, but the more she thought about it and the more interactions that she had personally had with the, with police officers, that she really didn't think that was a good idea. So I'm, I'm glad that you've undertaken the survey and you're going to bring information back, and I think if RPD can do, do effective de-escalation in, in their training, then maybe we can get to a point where we can even do more for our schools. But thank you for your presentation.
Okay, before we move to, I, I had saved myself from going first this time, and, and so what I want to say is, what I appreciate about this presentation, and this, it showed, this suspension data shows that people are being held accountable, absolutely. In fact, I'm concerned that we might be doing, heading in the wrong direction with the suspensions, because I know that in a few years back, this is how we started to work on the Code of Conduct, was because we had a record number of suspensions. There was a student in Buffalo that was suspended and left out of school and was murdered. And it, that caused us to really dig in and put some work in on this Code of Conduct. And it had, we started with reducing suspensions. And these actually are some, not only are we holding people accountable, these are actually some high numbers. We can, because of the rhetoric that we're hearing from the media, we might not pay attention to this, but these are high suspension numbers. And so, but the bottom line is, I thank you for this presentation. It was very informative. And now, with that, we're going to move on to the next discussion item. We're going to talk about the 2020 legislative agenda. Did anybody else have a question?
No, 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 I was just sharing the message.
Oh, okay. Because, so, so what I am going to do is, I'm guaranteed to the community, what I guaranteed in executive session, we would not be here until one o'clock tonight. Absolutely will not be. I want to talk about the legislative agenda. Our last agenda was in many ways successful, and we want to just be as firm, just as we were before, to our legislative contacts on the things that the district needs for the upcoming year. So right now, we'd like to have the board and administrators, administration participate in a preliminary conversation to brainstorm what the twenty-two, 2022 agenda should look like by reviewing the past agenda and proposing any new changes or additions or whatever. And I'm going to let Kaya put that up there and coordinate any suggestions or whatever.
Yes. Tom, can you help me share my screen, please? Thank you. So just as we did in brainstorming the 2021 legislative agenda, we always start with looking back at what our agenda was made up of. And so I have pulled up on the screen, and folks have this available to them in board docs, the legislative priorities that were upheld in the last session, and to review those and basically go through, nix the ones that you believe should be removed, and then make any additional suggestions. There have been some that have been thrown out throughout the year so far as to things that commissioners have been or want to advocate for, and so now is the time. And I will put these in track changes so that folks can do that. Commissioner Adams, how would you like to go, starting from this end or from this end?
So, to be honest, I think I need to stop, start this end again, because one of the commissioners is really serious about going first. So that was Commissioner Powell, so I don't, I'm honoring that.
Cool, thanks, appreciate it. I did have a chance to look at this, and I have three suggestions. The first, restoring funding taken as part of COVID-19, I think that's past tense and obviously could be stricken from the next year's agenda. My second suggestion, and I think this will be a little controversial, but I'll start the conversation, is to delete Bullet Five, access BOSI services at member rate. And the reason I'm suggesting this is the school districts around us that use BOSI's pay a member fee, and that's why they have a member rate. And to advocate to the state that we be allowed to use BOSI's services at member rates without paying membership, they'd probably say, okay, well, you can be members, but because of our size, the cost to us would be extraordinary and would not, it would not translate into savings in the end. savings in the end. So I'm not, I don't believe that this is something we should be advocating for because of that dynamic. And I think that folks who suggested that we ought to have access to BOSI services at member rates are forgetting the, basically, what the cost of BOSI is. I mean, the fact is, right now, we cannot by law participate as members in BOSI. But because we do VOC services ourselves, I don't know that, I don't know that BOSI could offer us the full range of benefits, because we do so much for ourselves. And my final observation and suggestion is that we delete Item 6, which is to reject changes to Building Aid, Transportation, and Funding of Residential Special. I think that those items were part of the Cuomo agenda, which I don't believe that Governor Hochul intends to carry forward. So until and unless we see her budget proposal for education, I think it would be safe to assume that those are no longer issues, because those were very specifically Cuomo's personal PEP fees or agenda items. So that's, that's my input. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Marley?
I support everything on the agenda. I'd like to focus on the moratorium, or potential moratorium on charter schools, and would encourage us all to work with our other Big Five partners. And Buffalo, they've done quite a bit of work on this. I've been in contact with several of their commissioners, and I fully support a moratorium. They've already done a lot of research, though, and I think we can learn a lot from their efforts.
Yeah, I would agree.
Thanks.
So I'm going to go last. I'm going to move down, come down to President White.
I'm good.
Vice President Elliott?
Wow. I was thinking that I could have some time to really think about this. But I would, let me just, I really do like the virtual online high schools, so I really would like for us to support that particularly given the time that we're in. I think that virtual and online may be an excellent alternative for our students. Those who prefer to be online, it would be an excellent opportunity for them, particularly, you know, we've got some students who have to work, and not being in school has, you know, sort of prevented them from having the opportunity to work the way that they want to work, meaning, in some cases, full-time. And I think that this particular virtual online would be helpful to many of our students. And then, in terms of staffing priorities, I think we do need to keep this on here. I think this is probably more important now than ever. But what I would ask for us to perhaps consider in this, and this may be controversial, but let me just put it out here, because we are in need of, you know, a number of teachers. The question about the certification, you know, is the certification really necessary? You know, so I would want to have some discussion around, you know, the certification. There are some concerns historically in terms of why they even did the certification that, you know, I won't discuss today. But I'm thinking that particularly if we want to get a more diverse workforce, you know, if we've got teachers who've got degrees in teaching, you know, they've come through some pretty rigorous programs, you know, I've never understood certification, to tell you the truth. So that's what I would want us to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lebrun?
Yeah, a couple of things. But I did write the access to BOSI. I would actually want to see numbers versus, before we take it off, what the rate would be, the cost, what the potential savings and so forth, if any, were materialized. So I guess show me the numbers for that one. But, so before, I would support it being removed. I do want to say the assist with Medicaid reimbursements that Carleen and her staff have made some inroads, I'm hoping, and I know that there was some connections with the local Monroe County, to start having some conversations around the SIN piece of it locally. But I do want us to still continue to work with the Big Five around the SIN number and the impact of that. The other piece, develop a mechanism for school districts to receive Medicaid reimbursement for non-IEP services and provide supports to students. I think we could do that through systems integration. And I don't know if that necessarily needs to be at the state, you know, legislative breakfast of legislative priorities. I do think that there are some opportunities with the tool that will launch in March to potentially identify and provide these services this way. The CPE revenues, certainly would like to keep that there so that we can advocate for additional settlement dollars that are coming into this district. I would just reword the last one to provide a process to assist schools with matching students for potential Medicaid reimbursement. I think there is some holdup in the way that the state wrote some of the requirements for SINs, but I do think locally, we can figure out a path to work faster. But I do think that we still need to push for this, so that that is one less barrier for us when we're doing this reimbursement piece. The MOE payments have remained flat. I would love to continue advocating for a actual proportion, that incumbents, inflation for this district, so that we can get a greater share of what the city is collecting. As you all know, we've been continuously collecting 119 million for more than a decade at this point, and it has never accounted for inflation. So what we used to get was a certain percentage of the city's budget. That percentage continues to shrink, even though it's still a flat rate of 119 million. So certainly to keep pushing for that at the legislative level. That would also provide us with some opportunities to generate revenue at a fixed rate as well. My ask is for a certain percentage versus a certain amount. So whatever 119 million was, I think I did the calculations, and it was like 13% over 10 years ago, that it continues to remain at that percentage. As their budget increases, then we would increase too. And then, lastly, and not least, Vice President Elliott mentioned the certification piece, and this has come up in a number of conversations for myself and even some of our foundations locally here, and other groups who are tackling the issue of certification for teachers, and also getting more teachers of color, both in the doors to apply to college, get into college, graduate college, so get that support for the certification. And one of the things that has come up is alternative to certification. And there are states, like New Jersey, our partner, you know, our neighboring state there, that does alternative to certifications for education, and specifically for those seeking to become teachers, and those who have had careers in certain fields or degrees in other fields, an alternative path to the certification. So that is something we are looking at locally here, but would love for this board to advocate for that as a body, certainly as other groups are navigating that as well. That's it.
Commissioner Clark?
Sure. And I'll start by saying, I agree with almost everything I've heard here tonight. I think it's moving in the right direction. But one of the things that, you know, we talk about often is diversifying our staff. And we all know that the elephant in the room is the state LIFO system. And I think we need to begin to advocate with the other Big Five, so that we can at least get this on the radar, so that we can begin to build protected classes, so that when there's a shortfall in state funding, we don't lose all the diversity and all the funding we have put into diversity due to the fact that we go to last hire, first fired system. And there's other states that have, that have come up with mechanisms to more or less protected classes, so that, you know, a certain percentages are, each class is actually saved when there's a downturn. So I think that it's time to move it from the discussions phase and at least get it on our legislators' agenda, and for us to do our homework, to see what states do this best. Other than that, I think it's a great topic.
Okay, thank you. I, I too agree that we need to not be afraid to challenge FIFO. It's needed. We got to believe it can happen. We didn't believe we could get the foundation aid, and it's still a question about that. So we need to highlight, we need to highlight that, the foundation aid, do it a different color, because I don't know, you know, I need to see it. We need to see it as a district. It has not arrived, as far as I know. But another priority, like my number-one priority, when I go meet districts, I met a couple times with them, I've always been the number-one priority I want to put on this agenda, is some permanent waiver of this chronic absenteeism thing. This whole district is going to end up being in receivership. There's all kind of reasons people are absent, not just because they're not interested in school. We're encouraging them not to come. If they cough more than once, we're encouraging them not to come, not to come back, get tested, blase, blase. So I think we really, we really need to press the issue about some kind of waiver, of that not even being a measurement for academics, or just being a successful school. We really need a waiver for that. And so I would like to see that added on to our agenda. And I'm in support of the moratorium on the charter schools. I'm in support of that. Anybody else got anything they want to add to? I listed, and we're probably going to reduce this list down. We don't want to have it too broad, too spread out. Maybe we need to have another conversation about
Condensing.
What's the priority?
Right.
Of these axes.
I also
Commissioner, I mean, President White?
Yeah, that would be my only suggestion. In years past, we've had these very broad series of goals and tasks that we want to accomplish. And sometimes, perhaps not last year, but in most of the years past, nothing ever got really accomplished. So I really would set out an agenda that prioritizes the specific things that you want to have done, and direct the community, not only the board, but direct the community towards those very few specific objectives. Otherwise, first of all, people's energies are limited, particularly with respect to going to Albany and sending letters. But I think if you really coalesce around one or two issues, whether it's LIFO or whatever, you'll probably, in the end, accomplish more than you would by stating in a very broad brush way, all these things, all of them good, that you want to accomplish. But thanks for listening.
Anyone else?
I want to maybe ask Superintendent Maris Mal if there's anything, because this is a joint agenda, if there's any points from the administration that, or liaison?
The only thing that I thought of, thank you, Calla, is the fact that our scholars have been in COVID for so long, and if there's any, and I can't remember where I had this discussion, but if we could look at the possibility with the students that have been under COVID at the high school or the secondary level, if we could do, advocate for them not being penalized for the four- and five-year graduation rates, like to just look at maybe the extension of that period because of the unfinished learning. I don't quite have that articulated beautifully yet, but that's something that's been on my mind, that, you know, we're going, colleges and universities are seeing with their incoming freshmen that they're just not as prepared. So just giving a little bit more time for our secondary students. But I didn't say that eloquently, so I want to
I created a small note, so you can
Thank you.
provide the eloquency later.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
Can you hear me?
No.
No? No.
No.
I, good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to indicate that we are working internally to, ready to use some of our legislative priorities, but also working with the Big Five to develop some joint strategies that the five agencies are going to be commencing together, and that we'll have that in session.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes?
I do have, I'm thinking of, and to the superintendent's point, I'm not articulate with this, I'm sort of just brainstorming it right now. I'm thinking of something around, you know, funded for, or some kind of legislation around social-emotional learning. And I don't know exactly how we do that, but I'm thinking in the time of COVID, there needs to be, sort of to the superintendent's point, some latitude, you know, so part of what I'm saying is, is that if there's more funding around field trips and more sports, you know, just so that our students can release, you know, a lot of the pressures that they're under. So I'd like to at least put social-emotional on the agenda for discussion. I don't know exactly what that'll look like, but I think that on the, you know, around the state, people are now looking at social-emotional learning. And if we can in some way begin to at least have that conversation in how you fit it as a legislative priority, and I'm not sure about that at this point, so.
Okay. But what I will say is, there are a few schools, or my schools, that I am in liaison for, that have had field trips, and they, oh, every single one of them talk about how successful, and the socializing was, and just it was a total different atmosphere. And so, and we have to be honest, there's a lot of mental health stuff going on, man. And so we definitely need to be, that always needs to be to the forefront.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Adams?
Yep.
I'm thinking about what President White said about how important it is to keep the list as short as possible, because, you know, it's easier to communicate, and we can't run to the state for everything. And I'm not suggesting that we delete any of these, but I'm, aside the ones I already commented on, but I wonder if, just reorganizing the list and putting local aid priorities at the bottom, and possibly, insofar as the equity priorities are a federal funding consideration, maybe move that to the bottom. When we do that, we may fit all of our state-level priorities, like our wish list for Albany, to a single page. And that can have a psychological effect, you know, if you can keep your ask to a single page. I mean, and even though the funding priorities is long, it's really, the state, if you look at the headings, there's only five headings that, of asks for the state, that run a broad gamut of legislative solutions for. But five asks is a very modest list. You know, you've got sub-ask, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 100 funding priorities, but it's very easy to articulate five asks and, you know, six asks within the first ask, that sort of thing. Just a thought in terms of how we present our list to the public.
Any additional thoughts?
Okay. I want to say that just as with last year, CIGR, the legislative agenda would be placed on subsequent, as agenda items, on subsequent other committee meetings, so that we can facilitate the continuance of this so that we can facilitate the continuance of this conversation. So even though CIGR will not meet until again in February, other committees, because this is, right, the Legislative Breakfast does depend on this development of this document. This is the first initial conversation, but they will be brought back in other meetings as needed, once we tie up some more.
Does any commissioner oppose that, me possibly getting on to one of your committees? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. All right.
All right, so, um, let me do a quick FYI update for your information. The breakfast is gonna be virtual.
Okay.
Um, just to help facilitate social distancing and it's just better attended. We don't have to worry about the weather, um, none of that. And there were people that attended that had never attended before. So it's definitely gonna be virtual, the date is gonna be determined sometime in late February. The Big Five Legislative Conference in Albany, Tuesday, March 1st, starting at 10:00, 10:00 AM, is an all-day meeting. Um, and it's also for two days, it's for the next day as well till like noon. If you can, join me. I'll be there. I intend to be there. The Community Action Initiative event is coming up this Saturday, November 6th, from 11:00 to 1:00 at Franklin. Please, if this issue that everybody is talking about is a concern, show up. Show up and you may have, you may possess the answer, you know? It's your input that we need. So just, again, November 6th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Franklin campus. And I'm going to, with that, I'm going to live up to my promise and I'm going to close out this committee meeting. Can I give?
A motion to second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, good night, everyone.
We have a policy committee next.
We have a policy.
Oh, okay. All right, that was time to go. Yeah. So I'm gonna pass the gavel to Commissioner Powell.
Thank you so much. It's quarter to nine, meeting was supposed to start at seven, but some of the information from the previous meetings was absolutely necessary and I don't begrudge anybody, but we do have a long agenda of our own, partly due to postponements to make room for other emergencies and what have you. So we'll just launch right into this. Don't believe we have any speakers, I'm just checking.
Can I vote?
Nope, no speakers on the agenda. We have, Callia, are you going to present the NISBA policy update?
Yes, I am. Give me one second.
Thank you.
Um, well, Commissioner, I mean, well, our Board Clerk Wade is putting that up, I just wanna say I'm gonna be leaving at 9:30 and I recognize that President White just left and I think Commissioner Adams is leaving at 9:30 also, so I just want to put that out there. I didn't realize that President White was gonna leave early too, so.
Is he gone or just taking a bathroom break?
He said he'll be back.
He'll be back.
He'll be back. Okay. Well, we'll go as far as we have, we can, and with the agenda we have, and if we have to end due to lack of quorum, then we will, otherwise we'll just keep plowing through. Hopefully, if the work of the subcommittees has been thorough, there won't be a great deal of conversation. Madam Superintendent, do you have something?
No, no, I'm fine, thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so there was a, an policy update in October from NISBA. There are several updates that they're available on Board Docs for those who want to read in entirety, but just to sum these things up, there are a few policies that they have highlighted can be updated. Firstly is the gender-neutral single occupancy bathrooms, and they did suggest a minor change to this with regards to building code. Then there's also public comment at board meetings and they have developed a script with regarding to the call to order and how to manage contentious board meetings. That is something that has been discussed freely amongst the Big Five districts as well as within our Monroe County school districts as well regarding hot-button topics at board meetings. Additionally, a policy update was suggested with regard to agenda preparation and dissemination, and this reflects a recent change that has been discussed by the board members. If you recall last week, we were talking about when materials are made public regarding the governor's recent change. And so Policy 2342 does reflect changes to the upcoming change from the governor. Then finally, there was a suggested change to, and this is an optional change that school districts may or may not implement with regard to Policy 8505, which is charging for school meals and prohibition against shaming. So alternative language was provided to clarify that additional meals and other à la carte items must be purchased and cannot be charged. I'm gonna, Mr. Carling, did you have any points with regard to those things?
I do, I have several. With respect to 1230, our bylaws, we were very proactive and, as you all recall, took several steps to delineate proper behavior at board meetings and included pamphlets outside, so I don't believe this comment or that this change would be needed in this district. 2342, our bylaws already stayed a 48-hour advance notice, which is 24 hours longer than what the new law is gonna cover, so I don't think we would need a change to that. I don't think 8505 is applicable to our district. I don't think there's any situations where we actually charge kids for meals. So I don't know that we, that's for districts, I believe, where there's some kids who pay and some kids who don't, where you don't want to make somebody embarrassed by being a nonpayer, but that's not a situation we have here. So the only one would be if we wanted to make a change to 0101, which we just adopted fairly recently. For this minor change with respect to building code, honestly, I didn't have the new language they suggested, so I have to look at it and to see if it's even something that would be of concern, but I know that the last three really don't have any, I don't believe they have any bearing on our district because we've been more proactive.
So with regard to the NISBA policy update, I would be happy to look further into the Policy 0101 at a subcommittee level with, with our legal counsel and whoever's from the staff is appropriate facilities, it sounds like, because it's based on building code. Is that acceptable to all?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Moving on to the next agenda item, we have the finance policies. We have them part one and part two. The reason they're set aside that way is that they were managed through subcommittee in two different sets. As you'll recall, we've just voted on the finance policies that recommended no changes. So I'd like to, we have a, and we have an overview, but then I'd like to walk through each policy individually.
Shoot.
It's the ghosts.
It's time to go.
The rules.
Bye. So, so it's my hope that the overview will show you the practical advantages of the administration's recommendations, that there won't be terribly contentious conversation about it and we'll be able to move through these expeditiously. So, Madam Clerk?
Wonderful. So I'm going to kind of breeze through the first part. As most people know, the policy roadmap is there, the policies do go through significant iterations before it gets before you, and so we're now here at the policy committee of the whole to consider what should be, should be, what action should be taken, given all the input that has been provided and the recommended changes. And all of these stakeholders have been a part of the process. Again, we always reiterate the standard operating procedures for doing these policy changes, and so I'm just going to jump into finance part one. The policies right now that we are looking at are, that have significant changes is, or would be, of Financial Accountability Policy 6000, and that, the significant change there is that the corrective action plans must be submitted to and approved by the board and that review, it does suggest a review and approval of internal audit reports. The Non-Resident Tuition Policy 6254 does now recommend that the administration shall advance a resolution setting the non-resident tuition rates as soon as practicable after notification from the New York State, from the Department of Education. And then Audit Committee Policy 6600, there is the term CAFR, which I will not repeat here, is, has now been identified as derogatory, and so we are changing that term to District Annual Financial Report. Within our finance policies too, these, the current policies that are, that have significant changes are the External Independent Auditor Report 6625, again, the change of the term to District Annual Report for the same reason as Policy 6600. And then the Policy 6630 now adds a list of current required monthly reports that should be provided to the board. And then the purchasing policy, there has been an additional update with regard to single-source vendors, who in the opinion of the purchasing agent would determine that it is fair and reasonable and in the best interest of the district to secure. So for example, if we're going to bid for alternative vendors at a cost of $1,000 and it would avoid the warranties of previous owned equipment valued at $1 million, it would be up to the, up to the purchasing agent within his assessment to determine what's fair and reasonable in that case to move forward. Then the Authorization for Contracts Policy, it now makes explicit the $35,000 threshold accumulated for the fiscal year. And so those are the finance policies that have significant changes, again, the ones with no significant changes were already adopted in the October 28th business meeting.
So, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, if you could put up the first Policy 6000 with the track changes on, and if I could get a motion from the board to advance it to the full board, if I could get a motion from the floor. A motion from Commissioner Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Adams?
Give me one second, I'm so sorry, I'm trying to work the system and also take your votes at the same time if you don't.
Well, I just wanted to get the motion and second on the floor so that we could begin discussion.
Okay, remind me who
Commissioner Elliott and Commissioner Adams.
For Finance Policy 6000. 6000, wonderful. Thank you. All right.
Okay, so we're gonna give the clerk just a moment to pull it up with track changes, just so that, although you did hear like the summary, you will see that titles have changed, you know, and there's some finessing of the language, all at the recommendation of the CFO. It is in your packet, you can pull it up on Board Docs, it's in a zip file. Are there any questions on Policy 6000? No questions. Are we ready to advance this to the full board? I'm ready, I see folks are ready to vote, so all in favor of advancing it to the full board?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Carries 6-0 with one absent. The next policy that requires changes is 6120 regarding our budget hearing. It's just an addition of a sentence reading, "Board," prior to the board, does not change the fact that we have a budget in place and that the budget in place remains in effect right up until the end of the fiscal year. Is that right, Commissioner, Madam CFO? It kind of goes without saying, but that was the recommendation, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Ready for a vote? All in favor of advancing to the next, to the
Aye.
full board?
Aye.
Aye, carries 6-0 with one absent. The next is 6254, Non-Resident Tuition. Effectively, it replaces the second paragraph with, "The administration shall advance a resolution setting non-resident tuition." It's basically what happens now. It's just a rephrasing of that action. Can I have a motion to advance to the full board? So moved, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Malloy. Are there any questions on non-resident tuition? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with one absent. Okay, the next policy is 6600. This is the one that our clerk referenced, the change of the name of the report, and there is absolutely nothing else really changing here. Do I have a motion to advance?
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion moved by Commissioner LeBron, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Discussion?
So, yeah, Commissioner Powell, so if the state is saying we don't need this particular policy, why are we continuing with it? Should we just eliminate it? What's the district's position on this?
Oh, I, I'm not aware that the state is suggesting
On that, on that PowerPoint, it indicated that the state was saying to, that it could be eliminated.
Let's go back and look at that, I don't have that PowerPoint open.
That's, that's
Am I looking at the wrong one?
That, well, that's also, I think that's NISBA, the policy service, that's not the state, that's the
Oh, okay.
The service we pay and we sometimes take the recommendations, sometimes we don't.
Okay.
Okay. It's certainly not required by the state because the state law covers the requirements of an audit committee, doesn't say, doesn't give every detail of how we should implement it. Madam Clerk, did I ask for a motion?
You did, you have one on the floor. Motioned by Commissioner LeBron and seconded by Commissioner Malloy.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor advancing to the full board?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
No, see, I'm looking at
I hear no nays, the motion carries 6-0 with one absent, thank you. Okay, now we're moving to Policies Part Two, or the Part Two. Again, this is a change to the title of the report only. Do I have a motion to advance this to the full board? I have a motion from Commissioner Malloy, I think there was a second by Commissioner LeBron. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with one absent, thank you. Motion carries 6-0 with one absent. Thank you. Now, in Subcommittee, this one, you can, as you can see from the track changes, was all about adding reports. These are reports that over time have been required by the Board on a monthly basis through Finance Committee, but never appeared in the policy. So this is really bringing the policy current with the way we currently do business. All right. Do I have a motion to advance this policy?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Malloy. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Vice President Elliott seconded.
Commissioner Elliott? Okay. Thank you. This is a pretty exhaustive list. The CFO went through all of the activities that she routinely presents to the Board on a monthly basis. And we also are now listing the quarterly reports, which the policy never envisioned us doing. Okay? Any discussion? I have a motion, I have a second, and no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with one absent. Thank you. Internal Audit Reports. Is this one, no changes recommended?
I believe this one also is in terms of the, the name. I don't know why it's not in the, in the track changes here, but both internal audit policies had a requested change to the, to the new name change, Internal Audit Report, instead of what we, the CAFR.
I don't actually see the name of the report in here at all. This looks like.
Let me go back to this.
This looks like a format-only change.
Oh, hold on one second. Maybe I opened the wrong one. I'm sorry. We should be here at Purchasing Policy.
Internal Audit Reports was.
6600, yeah.
So that's a note, we, did we already approve that last?
We already, yeah, we already moved that one last week.
So, okay. So it was in the zip file in there. Okay. 6700 then. Did I, did I inadvertently already get a motion?
Nope.
Okay.
You did. Somebody just made your motion to withdraw.
If you just want to attach that motion to 6700 instead?
You should do that when you start.
All right. We'll start over again.
No. Was Commissioner Malloy's motion?
Okay. So I withdraw the motion?
Okay. On the grounds that we've already voted on that one? Okay. Do I have a motion to advance 6700 to the full Board?
So moved.
Okay. All right. You'll see that there, there's a small change in the, in the itemized list and some very minor wording changes above that. This is the one where in the PowerPoint, our clerk referenced the preferred, New York State Preferred List. That is what you see there in the new number five. Okay? Any questions? Comments? Ready for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 6-0 with one absent. Thank you. The last one of the finance policies is 6745. You see the recommendations here. As you heard in the PowerPoint, the, the biggest difference is that we now, in this policy, aggregate the consulting contracts, or the contracts below $35,000. So if, if in the, in the collective, it pops up above $35,000, we now have to have a resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Hold on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We, we were just looking at the clean version of this document. I'm concerned with the language of Part D. I think that the, it doesn't make sense to have the period after preferred source and then start as determined. Just, just reading it doesn't make, I don't think that the.
I see.
I don't think it makes sense.
So it should have, it should have been inserted as a comma.
And then, yeah, I think it should have been that way. I, I just before, and it, it's not a, necessarily a typo because it's two different clauses now and I would recommend making it one. So.
Can I get a motion to make that technical amendment?
Seconded.
I'm so, I hope you heard that, Callia. I didn't hear. Was it Commissioner Elliott and Commissioner?
It was Commissioner Elliott. The, the who moved?
Okay. Okay. So it is a technical change, but it, it makes a difference in how the sentence reads. So, all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 6-0? Okay. And back to the full document? Any further questions? No questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 6-0. Thank you. Clean sweep. Thank you very much for. We will begin the clock, if you will, on, at the November meeting will be the first reading. December 2nd reading, January will be the third reading, and a vote for those. Okay? Okay. Still have a quorum. So, and what, what remains on our agenda is mostly FYI. Okay?
Except that last thing, we kind of would like to vote, right? Maybe, why you still?
6745, we voted on the amendment?
No, no, sorry. E. I'm just saying, I'm wondering if you might want to take it out of order with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. So one of the things that came up in the Subcommittee was with our parent representative, was an observation that our, our language is pretty universally, what's the phrase?
Gender-specific.
Yeah. And so she suggested that we try to get something.
More neutral?
Or, or nonlinear.
Non-binary.
Non-binary. Sorry. I knew I was wrong. So this, this resolution offers the opportunity for the policy manual to be taken as a whole, to be gender non-specific, and to authorize the clerk or, or her designee to go through and change pronouns from he, she to, to they, throughout, they, they're, throughout the policy. Could I have a motion to advance such a resolution to the full Board?
Let me just give you a number. It should be Resolution 253.
Now, would we actually be making that resolution, Mr. Parliamentarian, tonight? Or would we be advancing it from the committee and voting on it at the November Board meeting?
You have quorum. You could do whatever you'd like right now, if you'd like. I mean, I don't think you need to hold it. It's not, it's not subject to the policy review provisions. We don't need a reading and everything. So it's a resolution. You can pass it.
Okay. That, I, did I hear Commissioner Clark was moving that?
Seconded.
I have two seconds. Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Malloy. Discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion fails. Wait, one? No, we, oh, I'm sorry. It passes. I forgot how many people walked out. So 4-1, two absences. Okay. All righty. Thank you for the suggestion, Steve, to take it out of order. Policy 2410, we did find one change that needed to be made and that had to do with the readings. And I sent the, 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 the language is not here for the, for 40, 2410. The recommendation was in the form of changing the language in the first, second, and third readings. Everyone got that email, right?
Yes.
Okay. We can't display it here, but were there any questions about the recommendation? About the timeline of the readings? Hearing no questions, even though we don't have it in front of us to look at. Could I get a motion to advance that to the full Board?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Malloy, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Discussion? No comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Okay. Now, the, what we do have available to us is, I think we have someone coming back. The, the exhibit, I only found one question that I thought really needed to be eliminated. And I can't, I can't see which one it is. And some rewording of the questions. What I'd really like to do is to change this into like a form fill document, but I didn't have access to Adobe Acrobat Reader to do it myself and I didn't want to burden the staff. The exhibits do not have to be approved by the Board. They, they can be amended on the fly with, you know, less formal approval. I just want you to know, I am still working on the, the format of the document and we'll bring you something more final probably by next Policy Committee, if that's okay. All right. I also made a proposal to Policies 0000, Policy 200, Policy 2000, which does not currently exist in Policy 3000. And these, as I said in my email, were, are bundled because they all have to do with Board and Superintendent goals. I did not anticipate actually moving these forward tonight. This is because you've only just seen it. But I would really like to get feedback on these proposals. Essentially, Policy 0200 would go away because the Board goals would be Policy 2000 and the Superintendent's goals would be Policy 3000. And rather than changing the policy year in and year out, we would simply attach our new goals work as an exhibit behind Policy 2000 and, and Policy 3000. I mean, just like your feedback from an, you know, organizing the policy manual standpoint, does that make sense to everyone?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I agree with it.
Okay. How about, how about the far end of the, of the dais? Your thoughts, Commissioner Clark?
Well, you know, I did go through both of them and I thought basically we're replacing the, uh, the Board objectives and Superintendent's goals with them.
Right.
But if, if you feel.
That it doesn't need to be in the policy, I'm fine with that.
I'm sorry, which, oh.
If you feel that it, it doesn't need to be officially in the policy itself, but just the Board goals and the Superintendent goals, then I'm fine with that.
Yeah. My, my suggestion is that they be attached as an exhibit each, each year as they are changed. That way, we don't need a Board resolution to, to update it. As soon as the Board has agreed that these are the new goals, they just automatically go in as an update to the, as an updated exhibit. Okay?
Sure.
The Policy 0000 is, is essentially the information that came to us in the strategic plan in 1995 and it has not changed since. But if we open that, Callia, the language in this, just drop down to the. I'm sorry, no. I've got the wrong one. 0000.
Hold on. Let me go through it.
Oh, it's not in this. I meant, I meant for folks to see the, the new version, but what I've suggested is we taking the mission and the vision, the goals, the, something that one of the chiefs had on her PowerPoint, the, a couple of meetings back.
The strategic, the strategic priorities.
Strategic priorities is what we have at the end of our Board Packet every, every month. And there was, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to pull it up on my email because I'm not. There are a couple of other things that weren't readily available on the, on the website, but they all came about in the same strategic plan work from 2020 to 2023. Let me see if I can find it.
Give me one second. I should be able to as well.
I, I wanted to call it to your attention because I was kind of pleased with myself at being able to see that certain language in the PowerPoints that the Superintendent's Cabinet was bringing in front of us in the last month had common information. Okay. So here, this is the vision and mission, mission and vision statement from the strategic plan, the core beliefs, which is, I can't remember if that was, that's on our, that's on the website. But if you scroll down a little further, the guiding principles is something I only found on some, one of the presentations. And then the strategic priorities were, they're the ones that are outlined at the bottom of our resolution packets each month. So my hope is that at our next Policy Committee meeting, we can have a vote on this packet after everyone's had a chance to really digest it. Okay? I think that we have just raced through our entire Policy Committee agenda. It's 9:21, so it's been an hour and five minutes. Next meeting, I know for sure we're going to have the facilities policies ready for your review. We'll have this packet of four policies that we just discussed to vote on. And after that, I don't, I think, we'll, we'll be back, basically back on track. We do have policies coming before the Subcommittee in another week. What group is that going to be?
I believe that we're going to start delving into the schools' policies.
Right. I know, and I know we have December, yeah, November, December, and January are all, I'm sorry, December, January, February are all of the schools' policies, including the parent involvement policy. It will be in February. So there's a lot of anxiety about getting that reviewed. Yes, Commissioner?
Yes. Just two things. One, I wanted to have the Board wish Commissioner Clark and Vice President Elliott a belated happy birthday. I would sing it, but the y'all would probably kick me out of here sooner than. Yours was Halloween, right, Bill? And yours is tomorrow? All right. And then just, we all have challenges in our lives. And I know that throughout this community and even on this dais, folks have various related challenges in our prayers and our thoughts, or that all those people, including our colleagues, as we look forward weeks to see everyone back in this room, healthy and in charge of the district's future. So prayers and, and best wishes to everybody and happy birthday to everyone.
Motion?
Anything else for the good of the audit?
Motion. Have a good night.
Is that a motion to adjourn?
We have the survey. I don't know. We got the survey wrapped up?
So they jumping up on mine.
They are available on Board Docs.
Oh, okay.
Remember? Pardon my motion?
If you go.
I did, I did.
I haven't, I haven't called for a vote yet. If we can, you'll find the survey at Agenda Item. at Agenda Item 7A, just click the link.
I'm clicking, it's not jumping up. Wonder why it's there?
Well, there was also one for CIGR, so you'll, you'll have to go back and do that one, I, um, as well, um, the CIGR survey.
Yeah, 'cause you go into, uh, what's her name, I'm gonna have her come get me.
I can never find it.
Yeah, yeah, I ain't going, yeah. I gotta go work. I'm going to work on my mask, my mask.
Wait, you going to work, or you going to?
My work.
Okay, you going home first, then you want to?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be right, I'll help you off, take your job, too.
Okay, well, I've, I've finished my survey for this meeting, but we have the previous meeting.
The, the, the polls, because they're in Board Docs.
That's where they count, 9:14.
Oh, it's one poll for the whole, both meetings?
No, there's, 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 there's one for CIGR as well, but they, they don't need to be done in the meeting, because they're available at any time, so if you want to do them at home, they're available, because they're Google links, not like with the Zoom where they were tied to the meeting, so they're a lot more flexible.
Okay. So I did have a motion, but our.
Wait a second.
We have a second?
I, I need one, okay.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.